The Audits and Standards Committee. You can see that it is not being chaired by councillor Mohammed Marouf, who's having a well-deserved holiday. So you've got me today. Although it isn't quite like old times, Simon is here, from the relics of the old committee. But it's not quite the same without Angela here to ask all her questions. But we're going to do our best. So I've got to do the housekeeping-y thing. So, welcome everybody and welcome our member of the public. Can I request that all mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode? So as to not disturb the meeting. The meeting is a public meeting and it's being livestreamed for the public to view. Can I ask that when you want to speak, you raise your hand and only speak when I indicate that you can and make sure that your microphone is switched on? And when you're finished, remember to switch it off again. No fire test planned for today. So if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from town hall staff. We can see there's a green exit and a green exit there. And the assembly point is Tudor Square, which is down by the theatres. Now going to do quick introductions of everybody in the room. I'm Sean Admire Richards. I'm chairing today. So if I can ask, I'll just start. Alison, would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm in. Alison Howard, independent co-opted member.
I'm councillor Laura McCain.
Fran Belding, councillor for Perth Park Ward.
Councillor Simon Clement Jones, Chief Inspector.
David Hollis, interim general councillor, monitoring officer.
Tony Kirkham, interim director of financing and commercial services.
Jane Wilby, head of accounting.
Claire Taylor, chief operating officer.
Claire Sharrock, senior finance manager, accounting.
Stephen Bauer, interim audit and risk manager.
Chair, Democratic Service Officer.
Chair, received apologies from councillors Sue Alston, Mohammed Marouf and Henry Notte.
We haven't got any items on today's agenda which we need to exclude the press and public. So that's good. Any declarations of interest from any members? No? Okay. Minutes of our previous meeting. I'll go through them once for accuracy and once for matters arising. Page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12, page 13 and page 14. So can we approve these as a true record, please? Okay with you still, Simon? Oh, no. I thought it was quiet. Right, okay, so those are agreed. Are there any matters arising? Anybody wants to ask? Page nine, page 10, page 11, 12, 13 and 14? No? Okay. So back to the agenda. Whoops. And our next item is public questions. Now, I'll just say now that why we didn't have them on the agenda is absolute cock-up, not conspiracy, and they will always be on the agenda in future. We're not quite sure why they never appeared here. So you're very welcome to become one of our gang, Ruth. So I believe I have questions from Ruth Hubbard and she's going to ask them and I will try to answer them.
Thank you. Sorry about my voice again. I still have bronchitis, so it's not infectious. I don't keep walking into the chamber infecting people. But it means my voice is not right.
I was going to sit you closer to Simon if that was the case.
As we said, I will miss off the preambles and ask the questions. Thank you very much. Number one, how many complaints connected to the tree dispute are still outstanding? Please can you say how many of these are over two years old, between one and two years old and less than a year? What is possible to say about why these complaints are still outstanding at this stage?
Right. Let's... I was going to say on that one, I believe you've already spoken to our general counsel and he has explained why you will receive the answer to that one in writing. And are you content with that, Ruth?
I think if that's the answer, then that's the answer and I will...
Okay.
A way to reply.
When you get them and you aren't, or if you're not, sorry, let me... Come back, okay?
Okay. I didn't quite understand why it wasn't possible to just give a number, but, you know. But that's fine, thank you. Number two, I had a long preamble about the kind of narrative of systemic governance failure in Lowcock. And my questions connected to this were... I recognise that Strategy and Resources lead on the post-Lowcock work. However, given the important independent role of the Audit and Standards Committee in overseeing governance and audit functions, how has this committee satisfied itself that the governance and audit implications from Lowcock have been identified? As I've explained, a stance from Strategy and Resources that we agree all the recommendations simply can't perform this function. And I think responsibility might lie with this committee to satisfy itself that adequate attention has been paid to specific governance and audit considerations arising from the report. And to report back to Strategy and Resources or full council where further work might be needed to secure these arrangements. And my understanding is that S and R are not an executive in relation to this committee simply to allocate out the jobs it sees fit. So can this committee confirm how and whether it's satisfied that Strategy and Resources have been able to adequately identify and are addressing the governance and audit implications of the Lowcock report? And secondly, in relation to this, in respect of the one specific job...
Hang on, hang on. Can I... Otherwise I'll get lost. I think our answer for that is that we do feel that S and R committee has indeed taken it very seriously and comprehensively. And I think the fact that we took some time to bring the report to S and R shows that clearly we wanted to make sure it was a good and full report that went to S and R. Whether S and R fully understood the implications of what they've sent to us, I don't know, but I hope they have. And it's worth noting that Sir Mark himself reflected that the cult council that we had changed our culture since those events described in his report. So a lot of the necessary work has been done. But we will be looking at the implications in our October meeting. And by then, it will be a report which will start us on our way. It's not going to be, oh, here's the report and that's it. It'll be, these are the implications for us as a committee to work on and then to continue to work on them throughout the year because we take them very seriously, Ruth.
Thank you. And I hope the preamble gave the background to the committee members, too. Secondly, on this, in respect of the specific job allocated by Strategy and Resources to review the member's code of conduct, can this committee say what will be different this time compared to the other times it's looked at the code of conduct and not identified the gross and manifest problems in its functionings that were evident to so many of us during the years of the tree dispute? It would be particularly helpful if the committee could say something when it reviews it about why and how the committee thinks the member code of conduct simply did not work through the years of the dispute and therefore to identify what in particular needs to be rectified or worked on. Will the committee undertake to explain why it thinks the code of conduct didn't work over the years of the tree dispute when it comes to reviewing the code?
Yes, we have already started work on that. Post the, if we call it the tree era, we did have some workshops indeed of this committee. Although again, I think that Simon and I are the only survivors of that particular thing because that was when the local government association was bringing out the new and revised version which we now work to. So I certainly hope that working to that one is better because it is, what's it like, more detailed. And we did have a few wrangles when we discussed it at that time. Good wrangles. Oh, you're putting your hand up there. You're going to say you had a good wrangle. So obviously, we think we can always learn and improve. And if you look at the, on our agenda, we've got about the training needs of the audit committee. And something I would certainly like to see would be that we have an annual look at the code of conduct to see whether it is still what we expect it to be and whether there are any bits that we think aren't in it now. But, you know, we are following the model which has been put together by the LGA. So on the whole, I think I'm fairly content that the new version we work to is a better model than the one that was, be in use at that time. Okay, it's members of the public asking questions, but did you want to say something, Simon?
Well, no, it's just that obviously it does ask members of the committee to answer about this and so I was going to offer a certain answer.
Right.
Did the chair allow that?
Oh, I don't know. It depends on how well behaved you're going to be, doesn't it? If you would like to add to that, Simon, you may.
Yeah, no, thank you. As I say, it's really, so following on from, say, our experience of doing this, I think you asked, you know, where you think went wrong. And I don't, I don't know about the exact circumstances of the standards committee and standards board and how it was used during the trees because I wasn't on that board at the time or even a councillor for quite a lot of it. But I know from my experience of sitting on boards and from the experience that we had rewriting the code of conduct last time, it was quite a narrow focus. And I think we do know, do know a lot more now. I think, I think the essential problem may well still remain with it is it doesn't have any teeth and therefore in that case, you know, if you have no sanction, then the process does start to look a little weak. Thank you.
I could just add that the sanction was removed by the coalition government, but I won't say that, Simon. Sorry, Ruth?
Question three. This preamble was about the, what I think is a heightened risk environment for the Audit and Standards Committee. And it follows on from the discussion last time about the impacts of privatisation of the external audit function. So, and what I said was, I think this all should be a real wake-up call to this committee in particular. So my question, in being alert to the risks and as a wake-up call, will this committee consider reporting back to full council on that increased risk relating to the external audit function and specifically in relation to the reported delays? Will it consider revision of its terms of reference more in line with SIP for guidance to give a greater sense of its substantive contribution to governance arrangements and reporting to full council on this rather than mostly a list of reports and mechanisms it oversees? Will it consider looking at its, re-looking at its terms of reference and to clarify its relationship with the governance committee? Personally, I'd think about merging them, but not up to me. The governance committee, for example, says it has oversight of governance, but for example, has no role in developing or overseeing the annual governance statement, as confirmed with the committee last week. Will it consider rapidly moving to fill its two new vacancies on the committee for independent members in order to better secure its oversight and increase its expertise? And will it ensure it has public questions on its agenda in the future, which you've already said?
Yes, we are also extremely concerned about the... Can I say glacial, Fran? Movement of external audit and, you know, the abolition of the Audit Commission, also under the coalition government, was, you know, I would consider, and I think I've said at every meeting I've been at, was retrograde. And the armchair auditors, as you rightly said, just didn't appear and wouldn't really have known what to do anyway because it's much more complicated than just armchair auditing. I think we do have a robust process here to review our risks and we do consider them as our committee. Should the council risk exposure to delays in the external audit of accounts be assessed as a corporate risk of sufficient magnitude, then we would consider the advice of officers on how the risk would be escalated on our risk register. And it is something we are mindful of. And again, if you look at our agenda, we are going to be having lots of audit training and risk is going to be one of them so that we fully understand it ourselves and that it's not just a paper exercise when the report comes to us. The governance statement is actually, the SIP for advice is that it comes to us. And at the moment, governance is very, very busy because of all the changes that we've had. So I would be loath to suggest combining them until we're a wee bit further down the road, but certainly I know that other places do have audit and governance as the same committee and that may be something to look at in the future once governance, which Fran chairs very busily, has completed a lot more of its work and it's just everyday governance rather than all the changes. I think we have advertised for two new independent members and certainly Alison has had her term of office extended so that we do still have at least one independent person. But yes, we are pursuing it because it's a really important part, both for advice for us as councillors and also to have that external eye looking at what we do. And we do appreciate when we do have Alison and our previous person who was more on the standards side. Keep going.
Thank you. My second question in this area and, and again, it's in the context of risk and I am mindful of the huge pressures on the council all the time. But my second question on this was my concern and objection to the draft accounts lies primarily with what I think is an inadequate annual governance statement as part of those draft accounts, which was raised in a short item at the June meeting, but no concerns were raised at that time. Firstly, laid side by side with last year's statement, I think about 90% is exactly the same words. Perhaps more importantly, the governance statement does not appear to be written almost at all with reference to or in line with the current SIP for guidance, developing good governance in, a good governance in local government framework, which has statutory force under government regulation. Councils pretty much have now wholly revised the way they do their annual governance statement in line with the new requirements. And I think I provided in my question some links to some examples that just came up on the first page of a Google search. And I think Sheffield simply does not stand up against these. Given the heightened risk in audit, the governance transition, the serious governance failures identified in Lowcock, a weak code of corporate governance that's simply a list of documents and the lack of alignment with the SIP for requirements. And it is really a huge lack of alignment, as far as I can see. The annual governance statement currently provides no basis for confidence in the committee's current oversight or grip on overall governance arrangements. Will the committee address this urgently?
Yes. We've already said that we need to review it. So that's something we're going to be doing this year. And the links are always helpful because obviously cannibalising other people's work where it's good and then shamelessly passing it off as our own work is something we will be very keen to do. So if you have other, you know, if you're sitting in front of the telly and it's too dull and you think you'd like to look at other people's annual governance reports and send us good ones, then please do.
I do have a very sad life.
No, well, you know, I'm equally anaric-like in my devotion to this. So I'd be very pleased, Ruth.
Thank you. Okay, my final question. On the annual complaints reports, there's almost no information that tells readers whether any complaints involving, involve allegations of or connected to racism or other equality issues. I know this is a very top line. But given this area is a priority, is it possible to have reporting on any complaints linked to racism and other equality issues? Is this not a recommendation of the Race Equality Commission report? And a 3% return on ethnic and equality monitoring is obviously extremely poor, just from my experiences of running similar systems. Is it possible to find ways of putting equality monitoring at the beginning or outset of a complaint rather than rely on information coming in after the event?
Yes. Do you want more than that? Yes. And also Colleen, who is sitting over there, is actually going to give us more information about what you have asked. And I'm going to make sure that Jay puts, yes, is going to, will put that properly into the minutes so that you'll be able to read, if you don't stay on for our exciting meeting, about what we are doing. But I also know that Fran and I have been talking about this this afternoon and we also had some concerns that we were going to raise as well. You just beat us to it. Is that helpful?
That's really helpful, thank you. I'm not going to stay because I'm feeling, not feeling very well, but I will be watching you.
Okay, just so that you know, I've got a meeting in my ward at seven. So when you switch on, it may be Fran who will be chairing, not me. So when you see this tall person, I haven't suddenly grown.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for your attention and thank you for getting public questions on this agenda.
So Chair's power to... It's just like a chair's power to silence it.
Oh, right. Oh, right. I was not sure if I was shouting at you there. Right, so we'll now move on to item six, which is the internal audit annual fraud report. And Stephen is going to be presenting this. I expect that people have already seen that the BBC Local Democracy reporters have picked up on our report. And so you are a media star at the moment, Stephen. So no pressure on you now with your report.
Thank you, Chair. The report, which I'm sure you've all read, relates me back to what happened in 2022/23. We use that as a break in our work. I'll just go through some of the highlights in there that may or may not have been picked up by the star under BBC. We undertook 29 reactive cases last year, 14 which we did directly and another 15 which we supported managers on, as well as finishing off nine cases from the previous years. The cases are tending to get more complex, some of the easier. So although the numbers might be the same, they're becoming more complex in the issues that they're covering. When the items have been proven, if they've been proven, appropriate disciplinary actions maintained. And we also monitor that against the ones where management will have dealt with it to make sure we get consistency in there. And any issues that we find as part of systems work in there, we also report back. It has been noted that there's an increasing number of criminal activities trying to take part in phishing and scams. And that's part of a national picture, but they're focusing on councils just as much as anybody else. And we've got processes to try and stop that. We work along with HR colleagues, DWP, police etc., where that's required and we'll on that. You'll notice that although we've got nothing in blue badges where we've done any prosecutions, there are some which are in the process of taking place. In relation to housing fraud, although we're not directly involved in that, we always report that as part of this and we have a small team in housing who deal with that. And they managed to recover 25 properties as part of their work, which if you look at the national figures, they talk about that being worth about £200,000 a house. So that's about £5 million of the houses we've recovered and being able to reallocate back into Sheffield. Quite a lot of these are people, when the investigations start, they have the keys back in. There's also been four cases where we've stopped right-to-buys worth about £180,000 where there were various issues in those which we couldn't allow to go through. Another area that's always prevalent is bank mandate fraud. That's where people try to get bank account details changed. And we've put in some more controls and we constantly keep an eye on that to make sure that they don't get through because that is a serious issue, as in other authorities. It's a significant lotter. And I say luckily, we haven't had any lotter as a result of that. It's come close in the past. The number of whistleblowing cases has been negligible this year. However, I have regular meetings with the general counsel and with the head of HR where we talk about these sorts of issues and other fraud issues that come along and we're looking at how we can develop that. One area which we are looking at is below whistleblowing issues to make it easier for colleagues to raise issues, even if they want to do it anonymously, so that we can look into them. So anything that improves the flow of information, better. In terms of counter fraud work that we've done, we did four pieces of work, one looking at high-level systems, so looking at some of the payment systems and security involved in that. We've also looked at small business rate relief, council tax exemptions and members' declarations of interest. And we didn't find anything in there that was significant. One or two little bits to improve controls, but nothing of significance. We've put in a new fraudy learning package this year. And 52% of managers, it's now a requirement for managers to do that, have completed that and 19% of all staff, which is quite, quite a good number actually for some of the issues. But we're constantly looking at it and trying to move that forward and get the numbers up. In terms of NFI, this is where we have to provide information to the government, to the Cabinet Office, and they match it with information from other authorities and other accounts. We submitted all our returns on time and the quality was found to be very good. That was the... That was the information that we got back. They can fine you if you don't submit high quality or you submit late, neither which applied to us. And we're getting some better returns. The returns came back at the beginning of February, and we had nine thousand to wade through. I think we've done three and a half thousand. We won't be doing all of them, we pick them on a sample basis, depending on where we get maximum benefit from it. And there's still some of those to finish off. And finally, we've put a checklist at the back of the report, which is to allow members to see the controls in various areas which are known to be vulnerable to fraud, so you can see that we've got adequate control in place. I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, I've been asking questions just because we have the BBC asking some questions on their report, so I'm just going to, hang on. Just to say that the information I've received is that in the last four years, we've had six cases that have as part of them fraud or financial irregularities, and of those, four led to dismissal and two led to action other than dismissal. So I would say that's a very small number in such an enormous organisation. But I'd like to say thank you because one is too many. So, you know, absolutely getting those and saving taxpayers' money is something that is an excellent use of your time, so thank you. councillor Belbin.
Thanks, Chair. I just wondered, I think because of the BBC question and so on, there is quite a focus actually on the staff element of this. I wondered if the training, does the training cover looking for fraud internally from staff as well as looking at what might be happening externally from customers, et cetera? And so, and in terms of the take-up of that training, nineteen percent across the organisation, sounds relatively low, I appreciate what you're saying, but there must be some areas of the council that are more prone to fraud than others. So to what extent is that training targeted? And is there some information on whether staff in particular areas of the council that may be more prone to fraud? Is there a higher take-up there? And, you know, taking the numbers just overall, the whole organisation, it might not be that helpful, but if fifty percent of managers are trained, for example, but it's all the most likely areas of where fraud may occur, that's perhaps more impressive.
Yeah, just so that the e-learning, fraudy learning is a general piece of fraud work. We do some more specialised areas, so things like FANs and commercial services. We've done some work with our trainees as well to look across what fraud is, how it can be examined. We also have a raft of policies which we've updated this year around an internet site for all staff. However, they've not significantly amended from, there are tweaks in there. So last year we brought them back to the committee for ratification. This year we didn't feel that was necessary, we just updated them for minor amendments. I think that by recollection, there's one piece of legislation that's changed, which we made sure we amended for that. But we do provide lots of information for people to identify. We're also involved in lots of business partnering work. So when people come along with new systems, such as the FDA group in the council, we are part of that group, and we will give help and support to make sure that there's adequate fraud controls in there at the beginning. But we also do a piece of work on a regular basis, which we keep up to date, which is our internal document for looking at areas which are known to have high fraud areas. And we keep an increased eye on that. One of the obvious ones is a bank mandate fraud.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you. I just wondered, you were talking about how the numbers are about the same, but things are getting more complex. I just wondered why that you think that might be why things are getting more complex, the cases that you're coming across.
I think it's, one of the issues is that some of the more simple cases have gone. So one of the ones we used to get quite a lot of were things like timesheet fraud, particularly if people are working from home. That's not captured apparent, and there are processes in place to monitor that, et cetera. But there are, as our systems are becoming ever more complicated, we certainly get a lot more things through in terms of things like IT fraud, where people purposely or inadvertently access things on systems that they shouldn't do. And as those systems become more complex, there's a lot more investigations in those sorts of areas to deal with.
Thank you. Did you want to follow up? Okay, Simon?
Thank you very much, and thank you for the report. I suppose as a member of this committee, and when you look at these, obviously, if you'd have brought me a report that said we have discovered no fraud, then I'd probably be asking you some a lot harder questions than I'm about to. Because I think, you know, obviously, you know, it's human nature, we're not going to, we're not going to stamp out people attempting fraud. So I think, and obviously, you know, certain centres are going to be successful. I think the issue for me is that obviously what I need to satisfy myself is that the controls that we have are working, we're ahead enough to again to find the new frauds before they arise or certainly anticipate them. And I suppose the way, I suppose my question really in terms of the way I satisfy myself that the controls are working and that we are doing it, is the length of the fraud when it's discovered? So obviously, we don't really get a flavour of that from here. So I'm just wondering in terms of, in terms of that, yeah, how long it is? Because obviously, it's gone on for five years. There's a question to be, to be asked there as to why we didn't, we didn't get them earlier. So yeah, so it was difficult to talk in specifics, but obviously, for the more, the more serious ones, the ones that we should have picked up. And yeah, so, you know, is it a, is it the sign of a well-run council? Or, you know, is it a sign of a deep problem? Thank you.
I'll come back to you in a second, Sam. Just one thing I didn't mention when councillor McLean asked a question, is most of the stuff we have got is looking at internal type frauds. Things, the biggest one we used to deal with was all the housing benefit frauds, which is now done by DWP, so that's moved out of it. And the thing we don't report in here is where our systems have just thrown out attempted frauds. So if somebody's just sent a form in and it's not right, you know, our systems are picking it up, we'll get rid of that, and that's not a fraud, although it may have been an attempted fraud, we just put down as mistake on their behalf, full enough. Most of them don't come back to us again. In terms of the length of the frauds, to be fair, Simon, we've not had any recently that have gone on for a long period. Quite a lot of frauds by their nature tend to start off with people doing something small to begin with. And when they realise inadvertently or by chance that they've managed to get away with it, then they tend to increase and increase, and there's some, tend to be some caught after that. But we've not had any recent ones that have gone on for a significant period. And you could look at it one or two ways, either our systems are very good and they don't allow fraud, or they're very weak, in which case there's a lot of frauds going off out there that we don't know about. I don't think the secondary one is, is the case. I think in general, our controls, we review them on a regular basis, and are stronger and have the fraud issues built into it. We've not come across anything really where we've found any systematic frauds happening against us either. But the other thing we always watch for is there are criminal gangs out there who will target councils in particular, and serious crime squads, et cetera, particularly from City of London Police are well aware of this and put quite a lot of emphasis on trying to stop them. But luckily, and I say it's luckily, we don't appear to have been targeted any more than anybody else. Yeah, it's that sort of thing. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to put my life on it that we're not being targeted somewhere, but we have not found it and have no indication that that is happening.
On page twenty-two, thirty-nine, the whistleblowing, just to note for everybody that the results of the pilot and things will be coming to a future meeting of the committee. And it would be useful, in fact, you said you were going to be doing some pre-whistleblowing. It would be useful to know what sorts of things you will be doing for that. And then the other thing was actually, I just wanted to ask, I'm pegging this on page twenty-one, on blue badges, even though it's nothing whatsoever to do with your report, but just the fact that I know that there's quite a large backlog on our blue badge service, as in giving them out. And it would be really good to have somebody explain what is happening so that publicly we can say what we're doing about it. Would that be possible? Thank you.
Luckily, we've got Paul with us tonight, and that's his area.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Anyone who doesn't know, I'm Paul Taylor, I'm the council's head of customer services. I've technically come along to ride shotgun with Colleen, but as it happens, I'm the right person to speak about blue badges as well. So there are a number of stages to blue badge applications, and the first one is a very straightforward one, whereby people apply, they have certain qualifying benefits, which mean they automatically get put into, into blue badge. That has a twenty-eight day turnaround, and that's fine, that's a hundred percent. Where we've got problems is at an appeal stage. So where people don't automatically qualify, their claim is initially turned down, they're then invited to appeal, and human nature being what it is, and understandably, most people will appeal. It's become more complicated, obviously, since hidden disabilities have been included in blue badges. So that's led to a sixty-eight percent increase in the numbers of cases that we, the number of applications we have coming through. So we then go to something called an appeal stage, and we have sort of senior officers who review that appeal stage. In a bit of an unprecedented time, five of those people doing the appeals, four of them had very close family bereavements and went off sick as a result of that, and another one is, is quite seriously ill. So we suddenly found ourselves with a real backlog of those, those appeal stages, what we call second stage appeals. So that's led to a considerable backlog. We're doing everything we can to try and do something about that. We have a mitigating, we've got a grace period whereby when people's badges expire, because probably, I think, about twenty-four, twenty-five percent of those, of the people in that backlog are re-applications. So our colleagues in parking basically are leaving a grace period so that people won't get sort of booked if they, if they park with an expired badge. That obviously only applies to council parking, that doesn't apply to things like hospital parking, so it's not ideal. If for any reason somebody did come before us having, having had an expired blue badge, then that would be written off straight away while, while we're sorting this out. We're basically, we're looking at other councils for good practice, obviously, Rotherham have given us a matrix that they use, and that's, that's helping us to, to bring the backlog down. We have sort of peaked with the backlog, and things are now starting to improve. We're obviously offering overtime to all staff, we're looking at other services, if they can lend us anybody to help, and we've got a recruitment going on next week where we, a lot of the people who've applied are people in more junior positions within the team that does blue badges, so they're, they're halfway there really, so we can train them up very quickly and get them going. So if we can get those in post pretty much straight away, then hopefully we can bring the backlog down to, to what it should be. So normally this should have a twenty-eight day turnaround, when somebody appeals, it has a twenty-eight day turnaround, and we should be back to that hopefully within about eight weeks. But at the moment, it's, it's really not a good situation, and we're, we're doing everything we can to, to change that.
Thank you, that's, that's very useful, and I, I hope that our Local Democracy reporters are going to pick up on that and be able to tell people what is happening, because we are turning it round. Okay, thank you. Right, so on this report, sorry, the recommendations are that we note the report, that we note the council's policies in relation to fraud and corruption have been reviewed, and that they do fulfil the required governance arrangements for the council, and we note the completed checklist for those responsible for governance. Is that agreed and noted, everybody? Thank you. Thank you to Stephen and also to Paul for their reports there. So we move on next to item seven, the role of the Audit Committee and training. And Claire is going to tell us about this. This is something I've always been keen on, that getting onto Audit Committee is only the start, actually understanding what we're doing and being effective is what's important. So you're going to help us through this, aren't you?
Thanks, Chair. So this paper updates a similar paper that was brought to the committee last year on the expected role of the committee and what guidance and training is available to support members, especially new members of the committee. Last year, SIPF released a de-look-backs position statement on the expectations of audit committees, which was endorsed by this committee last July. Since then, the SIPF Better Governance Network has produced a further in-depth guidance handbook to supplement the position statement, which I've sent around before this meeting. Alongside the guidance pack, it's a requirement that members also have access to appropriate training to support them in their role. I've suggested in the paper some areas where members might want to focus training with the aim to spread dates throughout the year. So firstly, just a general introduction to audit committees. I've suggested a SIPF bookable one, as it's delivered by the author of this SIPF guidance, and it's run regularly every quarter. The next one upcoming is the fifth of October. There's also an LGA one, and we've had members from this committee attend both courses this month, so I'd be interested to compare the feedback and see which one was the best. Approving the statements of accounts is a key role for the committee. Usually towards the end of the external audit process, we procure an independent trainer to come in and take you specifically through our set of accounts, and we'll do this again when the dates for the twenty-two, twenty-three audit are clear, and likely towards the end of the year. We've got one other set of accounts still open for twenty-one, twenty-two. However, since the committee approved those in March, unfortunately, the external audit files weren't ready in time for the end of that month, which was the end of the financial year. So it meant additional valuations were required for the pension fund. So the impact of that is still to be audited, and we're hoping that those full accounts with the, with that impact included will be brought back to the committee, hopefully in the September committee. There won't be time to commission this bespoke training just to deal with that audit amendment. So I've suggested a bookable SIPF course that's a bit more generic, that's about understanding local authority accounts, and that runs quite timely around twenty-first of August, especially for newer members of the committee who haven't been involved in approving these accounts before. We're also hoping to put on an in-house course with the wider perspective of how local government finance works generally and how it fits together, but with detail specific to Sheffield, run by our finance team. And this is something we want to offer to all members actually, and we'll get some dates sent around soon, so we'd recommend that. Risk management is another area we've talked about as being important, and we've lined up a provider who's ready to deliver some tailored training for Sheffield. So we'll circulate some proposed content for you to have a look at, and some dates for that as well. I've also included a link to the LGA website, which is also a useful resource, and it has an area just specifically for members, and there are resources on there, it has briefings on there, and bite-sized e-learning courses, including some audit committee stuff on there as well, if that's of interest to anybody. And we can book or commission any other training, you know, to fit in with like an annual programme really, any, any other areas you'd like to cover, because none of this obviously covers the standards side of the committee that we discussed earlier. So if there's anything on there you think that it would be interesting to commission, then we can do that as well. So the recommendations for this, this report are that you are asked to continue to adopt the principles in the position statement from SIPF, better governance, and have regard to the recently published supporting guidance, audit committee member in a local authority, and approve recommended training for members of the committee, and consider any future training requirements. Thanks.
Claire, one of the SIPF principles is that the committee should evaluate its impact and identify areas for improvement. But I just wondered if you could explain whether we have got any arrangements in place? we have got any arrangements in place for that evaluation, and whether we have thought about individual performance reviews to support members in their development plans, their personal development plans.
So on the on the first point, Linda Hunter from Internal Audit does bring a report that reviews what the committee, the reports that have come to the committee, and the progress made on those, but also kind of what content we've discussed at committee, and whether we feel that that is the right and appropriate content for that year. And that was reviewed a couple of months ago, I think, here. And it's whether you think we need anything more than that. Included in that guidance pack, I think there was some appendices on there where you can self-review the performance of the committee. I agree with you on the performance, individual performance for members, and how we can support that. I don't think that's something we have looked at yet, although I think democratic services are starting to look at that in terms of how they put together overall training for members. So I think that is definitely something to pick up with their involvement as well.
Fran?
Thanks. Thanks for the report. I mean, I have one question that was related to that self-assessment of good practice document that came out, which the very first question on there is whether the authority has a dedicated audit committee that is not combined with other functions such as standards it gives. So I just would be interested in a reflection on that. This is an audit and standards committee, and I know Ruth was suggesting earlier that we even combine it with governance as well. So just interested around that. Just on the point you were making there before in answer to Alison, I think we have just established a working group on member development at the governance committee last week, that I think can start to look at some of those questions, and in terms of self-evaluation individually as well. I think that's something we could pick upon that committee, which would be helpful to do. I think, you know, the programme that you've suggested here is really helpful. I couldn't attend that first set of training on the seventeenth, and have booked myself onto these LGA courses that are down in Warwick, but I think they're not until February, and actually, I think most of them become redundant if I'm able to access some of these courses. I think the issue always for members is, you know, time is always, whether you can make a particular date, and I do appreciate how hard it is to schedule things in a way that people can access. I know one of the conversations that I'd like to take forward on that working group is around, it's things like the e-learning modules, the bite-sized stuff that members can access a bit more easily in their own time, and looking at ways that if there are webinars that we can, people can access them even if they can't attend them in person. Podcasts is another great way of learning potentially, if we can do these things on our way in and out of the town hall, instead of having to go to sessions, all these kinds of different ways of learning. I think we, you know, the more different ways we've got to access the learning, the better, because I very much appreciate how much members do need this kind of training and support. So be very happy through that working group to support that kind of work, and take some of the ideas that you've got here forward on that as well. Thanks.
Taking up what you said there, Fran, standards, when we have standards issues here, there are two subcommittees of this committee. One is the consideration subcommittee, and I think two years ago, Simon and I and Angela, oh, sorry, and Alison, sat through, was it one day or two days, two days, of deep consideration. And there is also a hearing subcommittee, which I think is an appeal from from consideration, is it?
It's if considerations sub feel that it needs to go to a hearing subcommittee for additional sanctions that considerations sub can't impose.
So that's, that's, I guess, the separation a bit, although we have also had audit committee meetings which have been, if you like, a standards agenda rather than, you know, more of an audit agenda. You know, we do try to balance the two, but I think most people do have some sort of combined audit to make it more exciting.
Yes, I was only going to say that the committee itself doesn't get involved in individual cases, so it's about the the system that we have for standards. All cases are always dealt with, that are the consideration sub or the hearing sub if they get that far. So that that keeps our separation.
We do have, you know, items on like code of conduct or some such stuff as well. So Simon is reminiscing now, aren't you, about that, those two days we spent happily. Can you get time off now for good behaviour? Right, so can we accept the recommendation which Claire just read to us for our training programme? And if anybody has further ideas, then please talk to Claire. Thank you. Right, we're moving on to item eight, which is the annual corporate complaints report, which is Corleen Bygrave's Paul. Who's going to come and sit here? Paul, are you going to join her? Fire away.
Yes. Hello, everyone. I'm Corleen. I work in customer services, and I'm responsible for the feedback and complaints team. So hopefully, I can give you a good overview of what we have in the report today. I have prepared a presentation, so I hope that that will take us through swiftly the details within the report, because there is a lot of data there. So just moving on to the next slide, just to bring everyone on to the same page, we attended this committee back in November twenty-two, where some recommendations were given, as shown here, that from this committee, we were well supported and also directed to ensure that response times are dealt with in a much timelier manner, and that directors ultimately are accountable for that, those results, and to ensure that there is an improving picture. We also were encouraged to improve the equality take-up that we identified through surveys, and I'll come on to that, about what's happened and what we're continuing to do, because that does require further work. We came again in February twenty-twenty-three and updated the this committee by means of a service improvement plan, which I'll allude to later on. But one of those further recommendations is that we provide a richer picture into our partners' complaints performance, of which this is, this complaints report does contain in appendix two, and I'll come back to that later. They, the work plan that's contained in our service improvement plans really keeps us moving in the right direction for continuous improvement. But I have to say, there is still a long way to go, and I'll touch on that again later. So ultimately, what we want to do, and what we think we are moving in the direction of, is enhancing our reputation as a council that listens to its citizens. But again, we've got much more to do, which I'll go on to. So since the last meeting, when we came, we have routinely now implemented regular meetings with all our senior leadership boards, where we present to them their quarterly findings on complaints. We also help them to understand and look deeper into what's causing those complaints, and really urging officers across the organisation to record the learnings from those complaints, which we still have very limited data on, but we are working with officers to improve. One of the things I'll mention at this stage, which we've been heavily involved in, is a review of our case recording management system to do just that. Hot off the press recently, we've introduced mandatory fields so that when officers are recording complaints, they must, and will not be able to close a complaint without recording the learning. Obviously, managers need to use the system to be able to record the learning, so there's still a way to go to make sure they record it accurately and close it down using the learnings. Once we have that, ultimately, I'll show you at the end of this presentation, we really want to be able to provide you with a learnings dashboard, not only for internal use, but out externally, so that our citizens can see that we're learning from the mistakes we make, really, to improve our processes and systems. We also were encouraged by this committee to come to you in a more timely manner. So we come by annually now to show you the results. So we were here a bit quicker than last year with this report, so hopefully, we've done that. And we're committed as a team to continue supporting our offices, to emphasise why complaints really should be used to listen to what's going wrong, and use it as a method to put things right, so that they're kind of never repeated, hopefully, and that we learn from it. So we have trained more than four hundred officers over the past year, and continue to train and support, and really to embed this transformation in culture about being responsive and listening to our citizens. At this point, I must mention, one of the simplest wins that we keep saying to people is, as you would expect if you were complaining about any other service, please just pick up the phone and keep customers or citizens informed of what you're doing, even if there is no progress. Because our experience is, if you explain why there isn't or why you can't give them an update, citizens are usually happy to know that, they just want that contact. They want to know that someone's accountable, that they have a point of contact to speak to, should they want to contact us directly. And that, we feel, is a bit of a, is a real quick win, but it seems as if officers are somewhat busy, and we appreciate that. But things seem to be happening more on email than on picking up the phone, which I call like the old-fashioned method of just speaking to people more directly. So we're trying to hammer those, some quick wins as well. Just moving on to the next slide, and before I do so, I just want to say about the results and the headlines. There are significant changes from the previous year's report. Number one is that we now systematically include the reporting of what we called problem solve complaints, or complaints that we try to deal with within the first three days of contact, and they are recorded as what we call problem solved. So before, we recorded them, but not within the system, and it wasn't consistent. So this year, that makes up a significant percentage of the total overall increase of two hundred and sixty-nine percent on previous year, and really, that's because of those recording. And really, we should celebrate that, because we do have a lot that we deal with at the first point of contact. Where we'd like to improve next year, or this financial year, in the next report, should I say, is to make sure that that good record is incorporated into our performance. And if I might explain, it is explained in the report, but it can be complicated. At the moment, we show you figures for problem solving, investigation, and investigation review. But when we compare ourselves, which will come in this year, twenty-three, twenty-four's report, we don't compare with other core cities, because they include their problem solving and investigation as their first stages performance, whereas the performance that I've shown you against our KPIs only record the result against investigation stage. I hope I'm making myself clear. So we hope that in this year, twenty-three, twenty-four, when we combine the two, our performance should actually improve, and it should be, we should be comparing apples and apples with our core cities, which is something we'll start to do in twenty-three, twenty-four. I hope that makes sense, but you can ask me questions afterwards. I'm not going to go through the stats here, but they are, as shown really, in the first few pages of the report. Some of the things just point out that the highest number of complaints are in housing, council housing repairs. I suppose we're not surprised, there's been a lot of media attention on damp and mould, and we've seen a lot of tenants, should I say, housing tenants, making reports because they need to. And also, I suppose, the media's highlighted that, so they feel compelled to. So that's all good. We've also noted, but I haven't got a reason, and I will add this into this presentation later, there has been an increase in adult social care as well, but I haven't got a real reason for that other than the the numbers have gone up. Also, unfortunately, as I said, for the reasons mentioned a fortnight, fifty, fifty percent of our complaints, only fifty percent, were responded to within twenty-eight days, calendar days or twenty working days. And we would have liked to see something nearer the eighty percent target, but as I mentioned, hopefully next year, when we include our problem solving performance and resolution, that should move things upward. The council's top two reasons for complaints, so when a citizen records the reason for why they're complaining, most of it is about delay or unresponsiveness, and the second is about accessibility. So whilst not going into detail here, our appendix four and A describes what we're doing to improve accessibility for citizens this, this, this financial year. I'll come on to customer satisfactions and the results, but ultimately, only ten percent of citizens said they felt good about the way they were handled throughout their customer journey. And really, that is something we need to improve. But often, the feedback is, it's about us, as I said, picking up the phone and maintaining, maintaining regular contact and updates with our citizens, and that's against the target of eighty percent. The next slide, yeah, is the Amy report, which you requested, this committee requested. And I just wanted to focus on one of those fields in appendix two about, oh, bore culture, I can never say that word, so I'm going to avoid saying it.
Trees.
Trees, thank you. And I've set a bit of context there, I hope you can read it, but they deal with over thirty-six thousand highways trees, four thousand of which need a separate programme to remove epiconmic growth on an annual basis. And this is due to the climate change impact, and they, Amy informs me that as twenty-twenty-two was the hottest year, they had unprecedented growth and unprecedented requests, and hence the increase. They also said that some of those requests, which totaled one hundred and ninety-one complaints in twenty-two, twenty-three, were outside their scope of attention. So for example, BT fell in trees, trees near BT sites, they are unable to touch, and so often, customers were advised of it was out of scope or out of their patch, if you like, and then that resulted in a complaint coming back. So that that led to a proportion of complaints. So all in all, they also wanted to note that despite the number of complaints, which increased by twenty percent, that's thirty-two over the previous year, they noted that fifty-four point five percent were regarding overgrown trees. But actually, of all their inquiries, which totaled over two thousand six hundred and forty-five, only seven percent were ultimately complaints. Just on to the next slide, please. Yeah, that's right. Just about, back to the council's results, I just wanted to note that the Ombudsman Report isn't included in this report, that will come to a later committee. I have said September, but it's more likely to be October, and that will include the results of the annual letter, with permission. And it is good to say, though, I have had a review of the annual letter, and it is positive about our attention and attention to and responsiveness to the Ombudsman's recommendation. So that is to follow. We also want to provide in future reports, with the Ombudsman Report, is a total of the cost of compensations and refunds, which will be included. Onto learning and remedies, as I mentioned, this is an area where we really need to improve. Of the possible four hundred and ninety-six complaints, where we could have recorded a remedy or a service improvement, only twenty-one percent were recorded, and that excludes our partner data. And this comprised of fifteen financial remedies, compensation or refunds, and eighty-nine service improvements. The most often remedy is that of an apology, which does go a long way with our citizens, but also financial remedies made up for. But also, financial remedies made up 14% and 13%, we actually made an improvement to our services. And finally, on to surveys, this is an area that needs much more development. Against the target of 80%, only 10%, 17 complainants who responded said they were satisfied with the way that the complaint was handled. And of the 25 equality surveys that were completed, which is very small, this represents only 14%. And of these, 13 citizens said that they had a recorded disability. So number one, the number of equality surveys being completed is low, and we really seek to improve that. We have got steps in our improvement plan to look at that, but we need to work across the organisation to resolve this. One of the, do you want me to turn it over? One of the primary ways, or I can continue, is the introduction of our customer portal, which will, do you want me to just hand over to you just to talk about that? Thank you, thanks Paul.
Yeah, so one of the challenges really is about how we're recording equalities data. As Corinne noted, really, we haven't had an awful lot in terms of people completing surveys after the event. We did a period of pilot operation where, with complaints, that was one of our pilot areas, where we asked people when they're actually filling in the complaint form, to complete equality's information as well. Again, very low response to that, probably about 5%, so that's not the way either. One of the things that's only now a few months off is bringing in a council portal, so that basically all customers, as far as we can, will all record their details on a portal. Now, that obviously has all sorts of advantages in terms of if they go into different service areas, we can track back on what what other issues they've had with the council, what other interfaces. But another benefit of that is to try and capture that equality's information right at the start. So that basically, when people are signing up, if you like, for an account with the council, we capture the equality's information there, and so then we can cross-reference then when people make complaints without needing to do any further surveying. And that should be in by the very latest at the end of this financial year, hopefully a little earlier.
Yeah, and just moving on to the improvements that are coming on the next slide. I won't go through them all, but just pick out a few that we'll be focusing on. So I've already mentioned the combining of the problem solving and the investigations to improve performance. We'll also be comparing ourselves to our core cities around our complaints performance. We'll also be improving the survey process and also trying to improve take-up. We are going to trial telephone surveys, so that we actually speak to customers ourselves and see what that journey was like, and hopefully we can capture some equality data there as well. But also, we need to do some deep dives into the services, such as our own, Blue Badge, where we find that people are reporting that they've had issues or delays. For those citizens that have protected characteristics, we really want to get underneath what's going wrong and how it makes them feel and how they're impacted. So we want to really get into looking into the learnings of our complaints and also seeing the impact to our citizens and hopefully making respective changes for the better within our services. That is quite a resource-intensive piece of work, so, but we need to make it happen. And then, the outcome will be the Learnings Dashboard, where visibly we can show what we've done, what we've learned, hopefully some good practice as well, because that is there. And that is missing in this data as well, so this financial year, we've improved in our case recording system the ability to consistently record positive feedback about the council as well. So that should be coming through. And finally, but definitely not by any means least, I hear the question formally about EDI data and the fact that it's missing out of this report. We acknowledge that, and that is something we will draw attention to. In the recent upgrade to the system, the complaint system, we have now introduced fields so that on allocations to services of their complaints, we can vet it or screen it for any reference to racism or any other respect and diversity issue. So we will be recording them. There is a small element there, but not a lot at the moment. So hopefully, in this year's report, that should be fuller and we can draw some meaning to the data that we retrieve in that respect.
In terms of the deep dive, obviously, Blue Badge is a good place to start, because we're already recording particularly information about disabilities that people are telling us about as part of that, so it's not like we need to go and get that disability's information separately. So that will give us a good place to start some of that deep diving, but there are a lot of other areas that we really want to focus on.
So finally, I've spoken enough, the recommendations really are for yourselves to review and give consideration to this report. And I, with approval, I'd like to include the AMI, additional AMI data that was included in the presentation. So I'll update the report accordingly. And also just request your continued support for the complaint, feedback and complaints team to keep embedding this transformation in culture, to ensure that we are a more listening and responsive council to our citizens.
I think the other headline just to highlight is that things are improving in terms of the recording. When we came to this committee back in November, and we said, next year's reports are going to look much better. Not in terms of what it's reporting, but the fact that we're getting much more information now. And, you know, I think there has been a cultural change within the council in terms of how people, how seriously people take complaints. And that's reflected in this report, which in places looks a bit grim and miserable, but that's actually a reflection of the fact that more people are now are now using the system properly and properly recording complaints. So it's a bit of a sort of waystation, but we're going in the right direction with it.
Thank you both, and totally understand this is a bit of a marker that we move forward from, isn't it? Rather than something that we compare to previous years a lot of the time. So I think it is very helpful, there's loads of detail in here as well. So, have I got any? Simon?
Thank you very, very much for the report, thank you for coming back, Cecine. And for all the work your team do at the very, very sharp end of the council. I suppose, two questions really. You've, over the last kind of year, two years, I think, you've talked about the culture change needed within the council, and I think last time when you came, I think you said that you'd made some progress in terms of better cooperation and being more responsive between services. I'm just wondering, have you made more progress since then? Have you got any examples for me? And also, I mean, I represent a ward that is basically half council estate. And so, I still am concerned, I think my postbag is slightly smaller than it has been, but it was massive. So in terms of the repair service. So I just, I suppose, what I suppose I'd like is your honest opinion on where we are on the journey with the repair service. And obviously, I think that's obviously tied in with the kind of wider scheme. So yeah, those two things, thank you.
Yeah, firstly, on a positive note, from the top, from the very top, SLB, they are very proactive now in being accountable for their complaints and also aware of their complaints. So they are very, we are attending all of their PLTs, their senior leadership boards, to make them very aware of what type of complaints and what these are and where these are emitting from. Now, you mentioned repairs and maintenance, that's something close to the hearts of most citizens and to us as a team. But I have to say one thing, repairs and maintenance are probably the highest recorder of complaints, not not because their service naturally would have those type of complaints, but they are actually a team that are committed to working with us in recording them accurately. Now, there are pockets of the council where you won't, you know, in my report, it looks as if there aren't any complaints. That's not actually true, in my opinion. It's because they're not recording them on the system, so I'm not showing you that they exist. But R and M do. For every single one, they put it in and we see it. So that will account for some of why their picture looks bigger, if you like, in comparison to some others that aren't even mentioned. Notwithstanding that, some of the complaints that are coming through, not just in Sheffield, but across the nation, dampened mould, some of these themes are so important for us to get right. And, you know, my view, when I meet with them, is that they are committed to getting it right. But it starts really at the grassroots upwards, you know, it starts with those frontline staff who enter those houses, who make the surveys. So it's a lot more than just recording complaints, and this is just my opinion, there's a lot of training and support of those staff to make sure that we are addressing those issues and listening and responding quickly. There are still a lot of delays as well that are happening, and that might, you'd have to ask the service for the reason for those, obviously. But as regards complaints, recording and response, we're all over it, because we know it's an area that is of concern, and we're working with the team there to make sure that we keep providing a better service.
I think probably, just something to add to that, is that in a change that happened from last April, Customer Services has moved into Operational Services, which is where Repairs lives. So we now report to the same director, there's much more join-up. That director is very, very focused on the way that the Repair Service deal with complaints, and he's also very, very focused on on what's causing the delays and how we can deal with those. So there is a real drive to try and improve things, and obviously, yeah, there's still a way to go, as your postbag says. But there is that commitment there, and also, as I say, we are much more joined up in terms of our workings with the Repair Service as well, which I think is helping to push things along.
I'll just ask a couple of questions myself, okay, before I bring Laura in. I wanted to ask, what constitutes a complaint? If I send an email to repairs going like, you haven't fixed this, and you didn't send a message, and repairs then pick it up, will they record that as a complaint? I know you're saying that is something that varies from service to service, is one of my questions. So for instance, or is it a case of somebody is filling in a form that says, I am making a complaint? Is one of my questions. Just again, following up a bit on the issue that Ruth raised at the beginning there. I do really appreciate how difficult it is to get people to fill in Equality Monitoring Survey, After Equality Monitoring Survey. I think we all get fairly bored of doing that kind of thing. If I'm understanding you correctly, Paul, if you're talking about a portal that would record across the council to different services in all sorts of different ways, and where we would put that information in once. And believe me, if you're telling me I do not have to put in my date of birth every time I report some fly tipping, you will make me a very happy woman, then is that what you're talking about? And okay, this still sounds very good indeed, and it'd be good to hear more about that. Obviously, that's about online reporting and how we do things online. Quite a lot of the things within this report talk about accessibility, and of course, it's important to listen. But if you can't get through on the phone, you can't get anybody to listen to you, because there's still lots of people reliant on the phone. So again, some progress on how we're doing with managing people phoning in to ask questions or make complaints would be really useful as well. You talk, I think in the action plan bit, you do, there is, I think you mentioned it there, Corinne, about talking to people with lived experience of the system that did have a day of, was it the end of last year? So it'd be interesting to hear a little bit more about what you've learned from that as well, from talking to those people with lived experience, just a few from me, thank you.
Yeah, so definition of a complaint, it is in our policy, but really, it's any expression of dissatisfaction, that is, whether written or otherwise. So as a citizen, they can go on our website and, you know, type in their report, they can phone in, they can free mail us in. And we've got direction of how to do that. Also, though, a really important part is when our officers are talking to citizens, they may pick up an expression of dissatisfaction, and they too are able to report that on a citizen's behalf and kind of handhold them through that process. So no, you don't have to write in in any formal way, you can do it in any which way. You know, sometimes it might be a text message, you know, something that somebody's come across that we pick up on. So that's the first thing, I hope that answers your question.
I think a lot of us have to be a bit sharp at recording complaints. I mean, I'll admit to being guilty occasionally of like, a member will write to me about something, I'll sort it, I'll send something back, and they'll say, yeah, that's fine, we've sorted that. But then I'm not recording that anywhere as a complaint, and that's terrible coming from the head of service.
And I often remind them.
Yeah, I think there is an element of that as well. In terms of the portal, yes, that's the vision, as you set it out really, is that we'll try and get as many customers, as many citizens as possible going through that portal stage. As I say, it's part of the overall customer experience thing of, if you go into a housing office about something about social care, they should be able to see what's going on and be able to give you some sort of advice around it. So yes, the idea is we'll capture that information, then we've captured it once, and people won't have to, as you say, won't have to give dates of birth amongst everything else at the same thing. But at the same time, we need to be aware that not everybody's going to be comfortable using that. And that's really why what we're saying to services, actually, it's not like we can just capture all this information centrally and you're going to have to work with us really, to think about ways that we can better capture information depending on the particular nature of a service. So obviously, so some aspects of social care, for example, they'll record information routinely about sort of equality, sort of information, disability information, they'll record it. They'll record it because it's part of that service, is what that service does. But individual services really need to work with us better about how we can better find ways to capture that equality data.
Yeah, and on the subject of accessibility, this is something within Customer Services that's close to our hearts. We really want to make progress this year, and we're working, just to tell of one aspect, with our citizens who do not have, sorry, BSL users, British Sign Language users, because they really find, are repeatedly telling us that they're finding it difficult to access our services and even to record a complaint. So we are working to improve accessibility for that group and others, but with them as our pilot group. And that's really by improving our translation and interpretation on-demand video conferencing facility, which will be added to our website very soon, may I add, I'm involved in that project, it's quite exciting. That a deaf citizen will be able to literally press a button on our website immediately. An interpreter, BSL interpreter will come up, they will ask them which service of the council they wish to access, and they will make the telephone call and then navigate them through while signing to them until they reach their destination. So that is something that we really want to implement very quickly, we're just going in the procurement stages, but that should materialise very soon. That's just one of the many ways in which we want to improve accessibility so that our citizens, particularly those with protected characteristics, can access our services and have a fair access to services as everyone else. Regarding the lived experience, which is learning from the learnings, may I ask that? I defer that response until our next attendance, perhaps, which will probably be in about March next year, because that's when I really want to be able to bring the Learnings Dashboard back to you with those real case studies. The information I've got is limited, and I haven't got any with me right now. But I'd really like for that meeting to show you what we have collected and also some real case studies about how we've learned and what improvements we've made.
Thank you, I look forward to it. Laura, did you?
Thank you, and thanks for your report. I can see loads of work's gone into it, there's lots of detail. And it was really easy to understand as well to someone who's not like, not the terms and everything, so it was great, thank you. I've just got two questions, one about the report and one arising from what you've just been talking about. And you mentioned that the repairs team are really good at recording their complaints, which is one of the reasons why the numbers are so high. But that, you know, there are other areas in the council which don't record complaints, whilst at first glance, it might not look like there's much going on there. And I just wondered what sort of work you're doing to sort of try and encourage, like, full reporting across the different teams and departments in the council.
I think they're sick of hearing about me because every communication we record, we're really appealing to officers to get trained. A lot of it is, not everyone has a complaint every day. So then when we advertise training, for example, people think, this is relevant to me, I haven't got a complaint. And it's not until they have a complaint that they want the training. Does that seem, make sense? So some people are just not getting involved because they feel they don't need to. But actually, every officer needs to be involved so that they're aware of how to record a complaint, to pick up on the signs of just an expression of dissatisfaction. And also then when they do have a complaint, how to handle it and how to respond in a clear and comprehensive way. And that is a skill that needs to be supported into those offices. So we're regularly imploring our officers to come to our training sessions, which is why we've got them as a standard agenda item on our training portal. And we send out cons more or less every other month saying, come and get involved. We also have drop-in sessions, so when those ad hoc complaints come in, everyone knows our team. I'm really proud of our team because they do work hard in scatting themselves so that people have a rapid point of contact handle and to give the given direction. So yeah, with a lot of promotion and a lot of provided support is the way that we're trying to do.
I have to say, I mean, there was a real impetus, you know, we're grateful to this committee really because there's been a real impetus from this committee that's basically said, you know, we want, we're one of the chief execs here in all of this, we want to have more of a sense of everybody really getting on board with complaints. And that opens doors now if we go and, you know, call in, what's the other senior management team, so you know, you're in there all the time. So that at exec director level, people understand the importance of that correct recording. And so they're now starting to roll that down through services. But again, it's a work in progress.
And may I just add to, for Simon's comments on repairs and maintenance, one of the themes that we will be pushing is a recording of race, reports of complaints regarding racism because now the system can handle it. We want to make sure that, A, officers know how to record and where to record it so that we can look at those themes coming through and that we can provide to councillors or to this committee or to anyone what those themes are because we do need to see what's happening and getting underneath those types of inquiries.
Another one, just one last question. It's some of the stuff I think you've covered already to do with equalities and reporting. But I'll just flag it anyway, it's page ninety-three of our committee packs, but it's about EO, the Equality Object of EO Four, about the portfolio priorities, about committing to the recommendations from the Race Equality Commission and the Disability Confident Agenda. And just looking at the actions and just wondering whether maybe some of the language in there could just be a bit more robust and distinct, things like consider and like customer services, to be clear, and actions arising from the RVC report. I just wonder if maybe this sort of time on now from the RVC, maybe we could just do some more definitive actions perhaps? And maybe like some of the stuff you've been talking about, you're doing already, but maybe just putting it more formally in the document? And I guess that was just my concern really.
Yeah, that's noted, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you. We will.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are we in more questions on this one? Thank you very much for a fully comprehensive report and we look forward to seeing you again in a few months' time. I think we are now moving on then to the work programme.
I'll just briefly, Chair. You'll see from page one hundred and thirteen is a work programme. I just wanted to make you aware that there's been some changes since last time it was presented here, based on comments made at the last meeting about including something on referrals. So you can see the table at the top of page one hundred and thirteen, referrals from other committees. So that's going to be a standard work programme now with including stuff on there. You can see we've got one in there from S and R. And then just a bit further down, part five, there's another addition, that table there, that's the proposed additions and amendments to the work programme. So that's in between meetings, which you can see there's three on there. Corinne just mentioned then in her presentation that the update on the Ombudsman Report that is coming to us in September, that she wanted that to be pushed back because that work isn't completed yet. So it's there for members to approve, to identify any other items they wish to include on the programme. And then with that amendment to move the update on Ombudsman Report to October, I think she said.
Okay, thank you, Jay. So again, I think this picks up one of the questions that came up at the start of the meeting about reviewing the code of conduct that has been added in there as well as adding in about community schools update, which I think came through from a previous committee meeting, didn't it? And then as Jay, and information management annual report moved forward to October, as previously discussed, and then as you've outlined, we'll move back the Ombudsman's report. Are there any other questions or comments on the work programme or anything that may be missing or we need to change around?
And then, sorry, the twenty-one, twenty-two accounts onto the September agenda and then perhaps moving the twenty-two, twenty-three ones back from November to at least January.
Thank you for reminding us of that. Have you got that, Jay, if we can capture that as well?
Sorry, where's that, Claire? Which one did I set it on? I've got a statement account moving back to October.
The twenty-one, twenty-two accounts are not on there yet. We just need to put that on September, if that's okay. And then the November one is the twenty-two, twenty-three. But we don't think the audit will be complete in time to bring it back here then. So we'll move that back to January.
I think we're happy with that. Any further items for inclusion or are we happy to approve that work plan as amended? Thank you. I think then all that remains is to say that the date of the next meeting will be the twenty-first of September here in the council chamber. So thanks to all the officers for their work and for members for attending. Thank you.